Good evening. I call this meeting of the Richfield Planning Commission to order. It is June 28, 2021, in its our first in-person meeting back at City Hall since February of 2020. Welcome back, everyone. First, we have approval of the minutes of our last regular planning commission meeting of May 24, 2021. Do I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second? Thank you. All right. Now that we're back in chambers, I'd like to share a short statement about good meeting process, mostly directed...
Chair Kwame, if you could vote on the minutes? I'm sorry, did you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. You're welcome. Okay, so we had a motion and a second to approve the minutes of our last meeting. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. And the motion carries. Thanks. All right. So I'd like to share a statement about good meeting process. Some of this is a refresher and some is new. All the comments and questions should be directed through the chair. You can either raise your hand or say Chair Kwame, whatever. Even though this might seem formal at times, it pays off when we have a complicated topic with multiple people waiting to speak. It also encourages more equal sharing of the floor. To that end, if two or more commissioners want to speak at the same time, the chair will call on the person who has spoken less, so sharing won't always be first come, first served. The chair reserves the right to interrupt a speaker if we're getting off track or too long, because it's the role of the chair to make the meeting run well for the whole, though a chair cannot do it alone. Two exceptions to that are when the chair asks for a motion and second, just please go ahead, don't wait. And also, when you have the floor and you're asking more than one question of staff or an applicant, just keep the dialogue going. This format is not intended to quiet disagreement. Debate is valuable and usually strengthens our recommendations to City Council. Thank you, everyone, for hearing me out. And are there any questions about this? No? Okay. All right, now to the public. Tonight, we have two opportunities for you to speak live during our meeting. One is the open forum and one is the public hearing that we have tonight. The phone number, I'm going to say a few times tonight, if you miss it right now. So the phone number is the same for either opportunity. For both open forum and our public hearings, people can also write or call ahead of the meeting anytime before 2:00 the day of the meeting and leave a message with community development staff. Staff will then relay your messages to the planning commission. Directions for commenting ahead of the meeting or live or calling in live are on Richfield Planning Commission's webpage under agendas and minutes. That brings us to the open forum, which is your first opportunity to speak or call in. The number again is 612-861-0651. This is an opportunity for the public to address the planning commission on items not on tonight's agenda. The public can comment live during our meetings by either coming up to the microphone, at the podium, or calling in. First of all, staff, did we have any emails or voice messages for open forum prior to the meeting?
Chair Kwame, we do not.
Okay. Thank you. And staff, Nellie, do we have any callers on the line for open forum?
Chair Kwame, I have any callers.
Okay, thank you. And I will ask if there's anyone in the room who's here to speak for open forum. It's a chance to share with the planning commission anything you like that's not on the agenda. No? All right. I'm going to wait one more moment for callers, okay? 612-861-0651. And that will be the same number for the public hearing, so. Count to 30. Okay, assume we have no callers, so we're going to move on, but just consider it for next meeting. It's always available. Next, we have approval of tonight's agenda. Do I have a motion and a second for approving tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on tonight's agenda? Okay, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the motion carries. All right. Next, under other business, we have election of a planning commission vice chairperson. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Kwame. In accordance with planning commission bylaws, the resignation or retirement of an officer of the commission requires that the commission elect a new officer at the next regular meeting. Commissioner Levin formerly served as the vice chairperson and resigned from the commission. The responsibility of the vice chairperson is to fulfill the responsibilities of the chair in the event the chair is absent. Upon election, the vice chair shall take office immediately and hold office until a successor is elected. Officers are elected by a majority vote of all the commissioners. Voting shall take place in the manner agreed to by the commission. Typically, this has been by voice vote. And that's all for the staff report.
Thank you. Okay, so that's a description. Basically, you're filling in for the chair. Do we have a nomination?
Chair Kwame. First of all, I would like to thank Pete Levin for serving on this commission. His dedication is will be missed. Secondly, I would like to nominate Commissioner Penn for vice chair.
I'll second that.
I'll accept the nomination.
You accept?
Yeah.
Okay. Any discussion? Are there any other nominations for vice chair? All right. All those in favor of Commissioner Penn being our vice chair say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. The ayes have it and the motion carries. Thank you for taking that role. All right. Next, we will consider the 2023 through 2026 capital improvement program and a finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan of the capital improvement program and the 2022 capital improvement budget. Staff? Or is it? Okay. So we have... Tonight, we have Finance Director Chris Regis here again, and he will give us a budget presentation and answer questions when he's ready.
Do you know what the password is?
Yes, I will come reset that for you.
Sorry.
Chair Kwame, while we get the computer going, I'll just introduce this item for you.
Thank you.
Each year, the city manager makes a recommendation to the city council regarding the capital improvement budget, the CIB, for the upcoming year. The planning commission is responsible for reviewing the CIP, the capital improvement plan, and making a recommendation to the city council. The commission is also responsible for ensuring that the CIB and CIP are consistent with the comprehensive plan. So that's what you're doing tonight, Commissioner... I'm sorry, Commissioner. Finance Director Chris Regis is going to present to you a high-level summary of the CIB and CIP. You are evaluating this document for its agreement with the comprehensive plan, making sure that the projects that are proposed do not conflict with the comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Just to kind of reiterate what Melissa has said, the projects are identified by city commissions and city departments. Preliminary report is generated by the city manager and presented to you, the planning commission. And the planning commission reviews the project based on the following consideration: the proposed project's conformance to the comprehensive plan. CIB/CIP, as recommended by the planning commission, is returned to the city manager. City manager then formalizes the CIB/CIP and includes it in the annual budget. The total 2022 capital improvement budget right now stands at $26,575,000, and the total 2023-2026 capital improvement plan is at $133,013,000. One of the significant projects in 2022, we have the continuation of the 77th Street underpass. I think groundbreaking is going to happen sometime this year. It's the plan. 2022, we also have the 65th Street reconstruction project at an estimated cost of $9.8 million. We have the five-year payment management program, which had an estimated cost of $3.4 million, and that's a continuation, or it's a kind of a step two of the whole Millan overlay project that just concluded in 2020. And we also have a continuation of the citywide water meter upgrade, and I think we're in year three of that project now, total cost of $4.1 million. And also, 2024, we have the Wood Lake Nature Center building with an estimated cost of $20 million. We also have the 69th Street reconstruction, estimated cost of $5.9 million. 2025, we have outdoor pool improvements with an estimated cost of $3 million. And in 2025, we have 70th Street reconstruction with an estimated cost of $3 million. Moving on to 2026, we have the 76th Street West reconstruction with an estimated cost of $6.1 million. Then beyond 2026, we have the Humboldt Avenue Lakeshore Drive project, the Nicolet Avenue reconstruction, and the Penn Avenue reconstruction, all with significant costs. Those are still five to six years out before those things come to fruition. And I think that is all I have. Again, projects are based... Your job is to look at the projects and see if they conform to the comprehensive plan. And it's just a brief summary of some of the high-level projects that are included within the plan.
Thank you. Are there any... Excuse me. Are there any questions for Director Regis?
Chair Kwame, I have a question. Just to reiterate, when, you know, when it comes time to, I guess, establish the budget for the upcoming, you know, five years, and then that, I guess, renews every year and you kind of readjust how things are allocated, does that... I'm assuming staff typically goes through the exercise of kind of looking at the plan, especially for larger reconstruction projects, that, you know, they're typically already listed in the plan, and you're already kind of doing that due diligence to start with.
Yeah, I understand your question correctly, yes. As a project works its way through the plan, they look through... They look at the project every year. For instance, I know the 65th Street project is scheduled for 2022. That was scheduled initially probably for 2020 or 2021, but it was pushed back for various reasons, and the cost of that plan has gotten up, so they adjusted for that purpose, and also the funding source is going to have to go up also to cover those increased costs. That what you're asking for, because they do go through and look at everything, and I know the engineering division does that for sure, they go through and look at everything to make sure that the costs and the funding sources are in agreement and that they have been updated and they're accurate.
Yeah, and I think more to that, I was asking, like, is it normally part of staff's process to make sure that it... It's already something that's listed in the comprehensive plan as well, or the capital improvement plan, I'm sorry, not the comp plan, that you guys are, you know, typically following those guidelines in your next five years of your capital improvement plan? Do you guys have those typically set out ahead of time?
I'd like to say yes, but I don't actually go through and work with the projects. They're all kind of central.
And you're just kind of aggregating, right?
I'm just kind of the compiler and stuff, so I hate to...
Aggregating, right.
Not trying to pass the buck or anything, but I would like to believe that, yes, they do go through and, you know, review and everything and make sure everything is in conformance.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Is your mic on?
Sorry. Excuse me. I'm curious about the abbreviations to the right of the dollar amounts on the form.
Oh, on the...
Yes.
Okay, there should be a key down in the bottom that they tie into, estimated revenue by source. So the Rs, special revenue, if you look down at the bottom, those should all correspond. They should tie out, if I'm understanding correct.
Commissioner Keneely, it's going to be on the bottom left of the page, so as you scroll through the column, if you look on the left, that last grouping is estimated revenue by source, and then it lists the abbreviations there.
Would be helpful, I showed you a hard copy.
Thank you for pointing that out for me.
Does that answer your question, Commissioner Keneely?
Yes, thank you.
I was curious, this isn't exactly about whether it meets the comprehensive plan, but under revenue by source, I was just wondering what GEO Street reconstruction bonds are and then why the user fees are up a lot from last year. Do you know?
Well, GEO Street reconstruction bonds are for... For the 65th Street reconstruction project, they'll be issuing bonds for that project that'll pay for it. User fees are just basically up because a lot of the projects down in the public facility section, I'm looking at 2022, though, are utility-type projects, and they're paid for out of the operations of those funds. So we consider those as user fees. People use, you know, water, sewer, stormwater and stuff like that, and then those fees that we collect for those services that we provide for the residents then is used to pay for those gap.
Okay. Thank you. Other comments or questions? Oh, we're... This is for commissioners at this point, sorry. Not until we have an opportunity for the public.
Question for the public. Can I ask a question or sign in there?
Oh, I don't know, we don't normally do that. Can I get some advice?
Chair Kwame, it's at your discretion if you'd like to allow public comment for items that are not a public hearing.
Okay, do you have a... Do you want to go to the... Do you mind sharing the mic?
No.
And when you go up, could you sign in on that or do that afterward and say your name and address?
I'm sure you will.
Thank you.
All right. I might have an accent. I've lived in U.S. for 52 years. I'm a retired person. I can talk fast. I'm a retired...
Can you start with your name and address, please?
Babatunde Farmudu. I'm not Johnson, I'm not James, I'm not Isaac. Babatunde Farmudu. I'm a resident of Richfield for 21 years. I was a human rights commissioner for Bloomington. I'm concerned that when I'm reading something as a retired engineer, I cannot see anything that reflects minority involvement. I go around the city, I rarely will find 50 people walking on my road, not a single black man. I'm concerned. So it's something that when you start planning things, you need to think about us. Trust me, sometimes I stop on the road. I ask the people, no qualified black man on this road to hold? Sign? I'm concerned. It's something you need to think about. Again, I lived here for 21 years.
Thank you. Would you mind signing in? Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. That's what he says.
Yes. Yes, yes, please. Any other questions or comments for Director Regis?
Thank you. Just in follow-up to that comment, I'm wondering to see if city staff would like to respond on how equity and diversity is taken into account when establishing the capital improvement plan? If that is built into the process, is that something that is part of ongoing discussions as equity is being discussed more at City Hall? Is there... Is that built into the process? Is that something that has been talked about? If you could just comment on that.
Commissioner Sturza, the city council has established a number of goals for city staff, and we reflect on those when we prepare any project or evaluate anything. In addition, the comprehensive plan highlights equity. I cannot speak to the exact process for these particular items because they are not community development items, but everything that we're doing in the city is based on the goals that are set by the city council, and equity is a priority, so we are all working on that.
Other questions for Director Regis? Well, thank you for your time again this year. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we're moving on to our next item, which is our public hearing. Chair Kwame, did we vote? No, we didn't. Thank you. All that preparation. Okay. So we need a... We need someone to make a motion on...
I'll move to recommend approval of the 2023-2026 capital improvement program and adopt a resolution finding that the 2022 capital improvement budget and 2023-2026 capital improvement program are consistent with the comp plan.
Second?
Move to second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, the ayes have it and the motion is carried. Next, we have a public hearing. We will conduct a public hearing and consider a recommendation of an ordinance rezoning nine properties throughout the city in order to comply with the comprehensive plan. Staff?
Thank you, Chair Kwame. Members of the planning commission, this request is related to the adoption of the comprehensive plan, which was mostly recently done in 2018. That's the 2040 plan. The comprehensive plan is a guide for future growth within the city. The plan is specifically meant to inform decisions regarding land use, transportation, parks, and other public facilities. Cities are required by state statute to ensure that the zoning ordinance is in compliance with the comprehensive plan. This includes changing the zoning designation or rezoning properties where necessary to align with the plan's guidance. I mentioned the most recent round of comprehensive planning was done in 2018. A decade before that, a plan was adopted, and that plan guided the nine sites that are included in the proposed rezoning a differing designation than what is currently provided for in the 2040 plan. These sites are 6936 and 6944 Penn Ave, 6745, 6737, and 6729 Pleasant Avenue, 7104 and 7108 Chicago Avenue, 2010 66th Street West, and 6701 Lindell Avenue. These sites all contain either multifamily apartment buildings or commercial uses, mostly in the form of offices or other commercial users. He proposed, once the plan was adopted, the... We looked at the specific zoning of properties within the city and found that these properties did not match the comprehensive plan in their zoning. So the ordinance that's before you tonight would rezone the multifamily properties to MR2 and the commercial properties to C1. MR2 is the medium-density residential zoning district, and C1 is the neighborhood commercial district. The 2040 plan guided these sites according to the existing use, so it guided the multifamily sites, then the medium-density residential future land use category, and the commercial sites within the various commercial categories that are in the plan. So the action before you tonight, as I mentioned, would just align the current zoning with the existing uses as well as the comprehensive plan guidance. Single-family properties were not included in the proposed rezoning per the city's policy of not rezoning such types of property until an application for specific development proposal or adoption of a specific area plan is, excuse me, adopted. So at this time, that concludes staff's report, and I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. So just, this is the steps that will be part of the public hearing, is next commissioners will ask questions of staff. And I encourage people to ask questions at this point and save our opinions till maybe after we hear from the public. Then we will have a public hearing where you can call in or you can come up to the microphone. Again, that number is the same number, and I'll repeat it, 612-861-0651. We have a public hearing. Then commissioners will discuss the item, ask questions, make a motion and vote. So do commissioners have questions of Planner Kurzas at this point?
I have a question. So are all the uses... I kind of asked you this in an email, but you said they're just aligning with the current uses, correct?
Correct. The subject properties, as I mentioned, either contain multifamily dwellings or commercial businesses.
Okay.
So the proposed, excuse me, the 2040 plan guided these sites correspondingly to the medium-density residential or a commercial future land use designation in the plan. So since the zoning didn't align with that designation, we are bringing forward the proposed rezoning to make that consistent in terms of zoning. So the multifamily would be zoned to MR2, which again is the multifamily, a multifamily zoning district, and C1 for the commercial uses.
All right, thank you. Okay. Any other questions for staff right now? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing, 612-861-0651. And staff, did we have any email or voice messages prior to the meeting for this public hearing item?
We did receive a few phone calls, and I believe a few folks are here that might have contacted me, but got a call from Joanne Eklund, excuse me, and she lives kitty-corner to the Penn Avenue multifamily buildings, and she was in favor of the proposed rezoning. And then I received a call from Mr. Omundo, who you'll hear from, and a Brian Combs and a Richard Scheichl. Those three expressed concerns about the proposed rezoning.
All right, thank you. So there is an opportunity to come to the microphone or to call in, and I will start by asking staff if we have any callers on hold for this item. Okay, I'll check back in with you in a minute. Do we have any people here tonight who'd like to come to the microphone on this public hearing item?
Again, my name is Babatunde Farmudu. You don't need to even remember Babatunde, just remember two syllables. Tunde, just like Sunday. Tunde. Farmudu is three syllables. Farmudu. Again, I'm not new to America. I'm concerned. I don't know any one of you commissioners living very close to where the affected activities is taking place. I grew up in a society where it says that it's not in my backyard. If you want to bring something to my backyard, I'll fight you like crazy. But if it's in your backyard, I bet you you'll do the same fight. I doubt if anybody is on Lindy, any one of you. I've been living there for 21 years. My youngest boy is third year in university, biomedical engineering. I'm an engineer, retired, schoolteacher, physicist, and chemistry. I have seven children, two Caucasian wives, that's my first wife, and my second wife, the first one with six children. So I'm used to this culture. Which one of you is familiar to 67 and Lindy?
The process is you can share your comments and questions, and then at the end, staff will answer. We don't do a dialogue.
That's okay.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm used to that. That is, the house on the corner of 67 and Lindy was moved about one block away so many years ago. That lot used to be for Richfield Bank. The president of that bank was my buddy. I coached these children's soccer. So when I was looking for to buy a house, I approached him, and that's why I got that house. That is, my own house, 6709. 6701 building was moved. And my concern is, the person who has that building is commercial. We don't get along. If you don't know, that's okay. It's commercial, I raised my family there. So it's easy for him or anybody 10 years from now to make my own property. I just said, let's make that another commercial. We call it planning and execution. I'm concerned. Therefore, why am I here? I'm not telling you not to do anything with your 6701. I'm not asking you not to, but I can foresee what can happen. And I'm saying, some of you might be alive, some of... I might not be alive, but my wife is younger than me. So please, whatever what you are planning, think of somebody else. My life is there. I plan to die in that house, I plan to retire. I coached these children's soccer. So when I was looking for to buy a house, I approached him. And that's why I got that house. That is my own house, 6709. 6701 building was moved. And my concern is, the person who has that building is commercial. We don't get along. If you don't know, that's okay. It's commercial, I raised my family there. So it's easy for him or anybody 10 years from now to make my own property. I just said, let's make that another commercial. We call it planning and execution. I'm concerned. Therefore, why am I here? I'm not telling you not to do anything with your 6701. I'm not asking you not to, but I can foresee what can happen. And I'm saying, some of you might be alive, some of, I might not be alive. But my wife is younger than me. So please, whatever what you are planning, think of somebody else. My life is there. I plan to die in that house. I plan to retire in that house. I plan, I've retired. I'm retired 12 years ago. I'm a retired schoolteacher, engineer, aircraft mechanic. So I'm saying to you, whatever what you are planning, think of somebody else. Not just you. Because if I'm a member of this group, I'll be questioning you to death. Trust me. I'm very technical. My name is, I told you, I'm very analytical too. So I'm not here to tell you not to do your job. What I'm saying when you are doing your job, think of me. That's all. Again, the address is 6709 Lindy. If you pass by, you see the second breakout. Thank you.
Thank you. You can head on up to the microphone and tell us your name and address, please, and then sign in when you're done. You have up to five minutes.
Thank you. My name is Denise Famaudu. I actually am just confirming on the paperwork we received from the city, we received two. And I don't know if Ryan knows that. One, I think, was a deceased member, maybe that lived there at that resident. And then we received ours. So I'll update at the end of the meeting with Ryan. But two, I did want to confirm, it is 6701 Lindell Avenue South. Is that correct? South? Okay. And then now for the C1 zone, neighborhood commercial, does that mean that gentleman I know that lives there, or not lives there, excuse me, it's a commercial building, they use it as a chiropractor, I believe? It's zoned residential currently, I believe? And the zoning is just going to change it as a combination? Is that correct, like a neighborhood commercial?
Excuse me. So maybe I didn't explain this well enough, but if you can ask your questions, the city planner will write them down and answer at the end of the last speaker.
I apologize.
So he is recording them and, but you can share your comments and questions and they'll be gathered.
Okay. So the question would be at the C1 zone, which is clarified what I understand from earlier, neighborhood commercial district? Can someone maybe explain that a little further for us as being residents for that household, a neighboring household? Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anyone else here to speak at the microphone for this public hearing item? And Nellie, do we have any callers on hold?
Chair Kwam, we do not have any callers right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing as we have no, there was quite a bit of time for people to call in, so I'm going to move that we close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Some, oh, second.
Any discussion on closing the public hearing? All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed say no? The motion carries. Next, staff, could you respond to the questions and comments we heard tonight?
Dressing the first comment or request for clarification. The, the proposed rezoning would rezone this 6701 Lindell to C1, which is entitled Neighborhood Commercial. It is currently R, which is single-family residential. So it, that C1 Neighborhood Commercial is one of the zoning categories and that allows for a variety of neighborhood-scale commercial land including office, small retail. We're not in, this, this specific request won't change the use or the user at this moment. That's up to the prerogative of that property owner.
All right, I think that completes our answering the questions for the public hearing. So I will open it up to the commissioners for questions or discussion on this item.
Chair Kwam. I just wanted to maybe get some clarification, I think, on Tunde? All right. On Tunde's concern, on, on just the future of adjacent properties such as his or other ones around them and typically for those to ever, I guess, question for staff, typically for those to ever change, I'm assuming that goes through the comprehensive planning process, which is normally revisited every decade. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. The comprehensive planning process is a 10-year cycle. So 2018 was the last cycle and then we would be due for an update in 2028, which is off in the future, but will come up fast, as they tend to do. So beyond just the regular planning preparation update cycle, property owner could ask that a comprehensive plan amendment be enacted and that can include a change to a designation for particular properties. That would involve public hearings and review at the Planning Commission and City Council.
Thank you. And so just to, so to further clarify, I guess, you know, the long-term, if you're looking to have your voice heard on your concerns for your property or other adjacent properties to be changed, I highly recommend, you know, when, when the mailings start coming out in 2028 or sooner, hopefully, yeah, that you be, that you be involved in that process though, because I think, you know, if there's a lot of voices that have the same concern about your property, it's, it's, it's when it matters. And this is what I'm finding, working through a lot of our planning, our, our development projects that have come before us in the last few years. You know, a lot of people weren't taking part in the planning process when the plan updates happen, when the zoning changes. And I think a lot of people feel like they missed that opportunity, they missed that window. And so I just, I highly recommend anybody just, just please take part in that process when, when it does come around. I know it's far off. I know it's not top of mind, but, so that's my two cents, I guess.
Thanks, Commissioner Pin. Vice Chair Pin. Other questions or comments about this item?
Chair Kwam?
I have a question for city staff. The property at 6701 Lindell is currently being used for commercial while zoned as a residential. The future owner of that property, if it is sold down the road, would they have the ability to use it as a residence instead of a commercial property with a zoning change like this?
So the current zoning is single-family residential and the proposed zoning for this process would go to C1 Neighborhood Commercial. So when that, if, if and when that change occurs, then a standalone residential use in the C1 district would not be permitted?
Thank you.
I have a question. Is this, is this similar to what happened by the Veterans Park area? Making those conform to the comprehensive plan or is this a little different because they're already being used that way?
This exercise is different in that we were evaluating what the current use was on the ground versus what the plan specified for, for these properties. In that case, that matching didn't necessarily occur because we were going specific study, going through a specific study of that area.
Thank you.
Chair Kwam, may I have one more question? So, so with this property in particular, odds are this, this landowner came forth to Planning Commission or Council however long ago and asked for a variance to run the business out of the house? Or is this just happening or how does that typically happen?
Chair Kwam, members of the commission. In general, no, that's probably not how this happened. I would imagine if we went back and looked at previous comp plans, that this property has probably flip-flopped back and forth as theories about the way that you want the community to develop have changed. So several years ago, now 15 years ago, when we were looking at the 1998 and the 2008 plans, there was probably less desire for commercial to potentially continue on these small commercial nodes. The theories and the desires of community have changed in that decade where we've said, these are valuable assets to our community. We want to keep them. These are small business owners. These are things that we want to preserve. We should change the comprehensive plan to allow them to stay. And so that's what happened in this round. So I don't believe that at some point this owner came in and asked for a non-conforming use. I believe that they were conforming when they went in. They became non-conforming. Now they will be conforming again.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments or discussion? I wanted to follow up on Commissioner Pin's plug to be involved in the comprehensive plan next time, and I know that doesn't solve this problem, but for those listening, the process of getting volunteers to be on that committee is probably only a few years away. It's not as long, far away as it seems and it's, it's really good to be involved at the front end. I think they'll start recruiting volunteers like in 2026 maybe? Because it's a long process of a couple of years, like a year and a half. So just keep that in mind, anyone who's interested that's listening. All right, any other discussion? Someone like to make a motion?
I motion to recommend approval of an ordinance rezoning nine properties throughout the city in order to comply with the comprehensive plan.
A second?
I'll second.
Discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no? The ayes have it and the motion is carried. Thank you for coming tonight. You're welcome to stay. I just, thanks for your input. Okay, so next we have liaison reports. For the liaison reports and through the end of the meeting, are commissioners okay with proceeding more informally? As long as we stay on topic? All right, let's just go ahead then. Community Services Advisory Commission, do you have a report?
No report.
City Council?
The only thing I would say is that there was a final vote on the organized garbage. I think that it's going to be, it's going to be a reality as of October 1st. And so we'll just see how this all works out. I suppose all the plans will unfold as the summer wears on. But something that is pretty progressive and I'm glad to see that happen.
Thank you. Housing and redevelopment authority.
There were two things, two items that will likely, I'm suspecting, come to the Planning Commission at some point. The HRA supported a resolution for a tax credit application for proposed multifamily housing development at 6501 Penn Ave South. And they also supported memorandum of understanding with Benefactor Brewing to assist them with funding a brewery at the site north of Lake Winds.
Interesting stuff. That's the bumper-to-bumper site, I think, right? Does anyone know?
The Penn Ave site?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the bumper-to-bumper site.
Yeah. That'll be nice. Okay, Transportation Commission.
They did not meet. No report.
Thank you. Sustainability Commission.
No report.
Okay, thank you. All right, so next we are at the city planners' reports. Staff?
Chair Kwam, I wanted to let you know that last night, was it last week? The Planning Commission, I'm sorry, mixed up here. The City Council approved the final overlay district for the Veterans Park area. They also, also the moratorium expired last Thursday. So those new regulations are now effective and the moratorium has expired. In terms of your next meetings, I'll let you know that the work session on July 19th has been canceled, so that night is now free for you. And your next regular meeting is on July 26th.
Did you say we do have one on the 26th still, a work session?
That's correct.
Do you know the topic?
I believe it will be in regard to the firearms moratorium. That's what we're planning. There is, for those who may not be aware, there is a moratorium on firearms-related uses currently. And so we'll be bringing forward some research that we've done and some proposed modifications to those regulations.
Thank you. All right.
Chair Kwam, I have a question for staff real quick. Can you either be given update on the 6501, the bumper-to-bumper site? Like is there, or is there nothing to report as of now?
HRA Executive Director John Stark is here and he could probably give a better update than I could.
It doesn't need to be deep and lengthy. It can be really short and brief, right?
Thank you, Chair Kwam and Commissioner Pin. Excuse me. The developer that's been kind of selected for that site, they are seeking tax credits. So it would be really dependent on how they score in the tax credit process. Usually that application is submitted in June and they hear their, the decision in October. If they were to be approved, the tax credits, I think that they would probably be under construction next year. If they're to be denied the tax credits, I think that there are still some other funding venues that they could seek, so that wouldn't be the end of the road. Right now, the project consists only of the bumper-to-bumper building and then there's this building to the south of it that kind of is a walkout industrial. It's a strange garage kind of a building, so that's included as well. They would ultimately like to include the building that the K9 College was operating out of. That building is now vacant and they have been trying to communicate with the property owner to see if that could be included. So I don't know if that answers your question.
It does.
It's all right. The, the project as is proposed, also I've forgotten, does include the properties directly to the east.
The ones behind on Queen?
Right. I believe one is a duplex.
Or no, on Oliver, sorry.
Yeah. Is the duplex the one that's included? Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Which one is the duplex on the corner?
No.
Oh, it's the one. Oh, interesting. Okay.
Commissioner Pin, it, it is the property on the corner. There's a sliver of HRA property and then it's the first, it's the first home. I cannot remember if it's a duplex or a single-family, but it is that first home that is included.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sorry, to the naked eye, it would look like the first property on the, on the corner.
Right.
But there is a, of a small vacant lot on the corner.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Stark. All right. So thank you, everybody who participated in tonight's meeting and do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second? Oh, that was a question, so.
I second.
Thank you. All right, all in, any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no? The motion passes and we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.